October 15th meeting, I will call this meeting to order. Would you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we're standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and before we go on to roll call, I'd like to observe that our IT director is back, and we welcome Jim back. We know you've had some issues, Jim. We've all missed you. Welcome back. Thank you for being here this evening, and his lovely wife is here as well. So, welcome, and thank you for being here. Next up is roll call. Start voting, please. Kristi?
We have a quorum with six councilors present. Counselor Coleman previously requested to be excused.
Thank you, Kristi. Next up is the agenda approval. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda? None? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move that we do the agendas presented with the addition of excusing Counselor Coleman.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the agenda approval? Seeing none, start voting, counsel. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting, and I have two this evening, and I will start with Amy Schrevesi. I hope that is correct. Amy, please come to the microphone and give us your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Amy Schrevesi. I live at 202 13th Street here in Alamosa. So, I came this evening -- or do you want me to keep going right now?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I came this evening to give an update on La Puente as an organization. Lance Chestlock would usually be here, but he had a friend in Colorado Springs who had a stroke today, so he went up there to be with them. So, I'm here in his place. I wanted to thank the city council members who came to the community lunch during Hope Week. It was a very successful week for us. It stands for homeless organizations promoting education, and that's kind of all that we do that week is invite people to get involved with the programs and to understand some more about poverty and homelessness. We had candlelight vigil. We had over 70 people attend that evening, and three shelter guests shared their stories. It was really touching and was very impactful. Our migrant farmer season is coming to an end here in the valley. It wrapped up a little bit quicker than most years, but it definitely still is one of our -- or it is our peak season at the shelter. We're usually right at capacity and are having people sleep on mats because we have less beds than bodies during that time. An odometer reading so far since January 1, we've served over 13,000 clients in some tangible way. That doesn't count people who participate in events like Hope Week that is specific to clients who are receiving emergency shelter or transitional housing or homeless prevention or food services. So, that's just over 25% of the Sandless Valley population. We have our new batch of AmeriCorps members who came in August. They're getting into the swing of things, and I think it's a really cool program. That's actually my program. They come for a full year to serve at our programs and focus on service, simple living, and social justice. It's very impactful on them as much as it's impactful in our community. We have 20 full-time AmeriCorps members and then three volunteers, two who are international from Belgium and Germany, and one who's just a local volunteer who are full-time. We had an event for our transitional housing program last week, last Thursday, and it was a huge success. It was meant to be a time to share and reflect what the program does. It's a two-year transitional housing program for families to learn to become self-sustainable and receive the help they need along the way. And two of their families were able to share their story at that event, and we had a gourmet chef volunteer to cook for that event, which was really cool. PALS, which is our children's program, which is specific for children who are suffering some sort of abuse or neglect, and it's a by-referral-only program. They had a huge event in July, and the children served dinner to the community and got to just engage with community members. It was really fun to have the kids with all the community members. Our work group season is coming to a close while the busy times wrapping up. We bring in hundreds of people from all over the country to come and spend usually three to five days. Is that like an alarm that's telling them over my time limit?
Yeah, we've got a three-minute time limit.
Okay.
Could you wrap it up?
I can, yeah.
Thank you.
Definitely. So, work group season's coming to an end. People come from all over the country to spend some time volunteering and helping out at our programs, and our gleaning season is wrapped up. We were able to glean over 10,000 pounds of produce to assist the food bank in feeding people this year. So, that is our update for you guys.
Thank you very much, Amy. We really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions or comments of Amy? Counsel?
Mayor, I -- hold. Amy, talk about capacity. What is your capacity there?
At the shelter?
Yes.
Our capacity is, I think it's 120 people can stay there the night. We have 48 beds.
Because you talked about that you were up to your capacity.
Yeah, we had over 100 shelter guests during the busiest time of migrant season, so...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counsel Gregel. Anyone else? Counsel Stefano?
What is the time limit that people can stay there?
At the shelter?
Yes.
Initially, it's a 30-night stay limit per year, which is usually extended to 60 if we can see that people have a positive attitude and a lot of effort to getting on their feet. 60 night stays is pretty much the cutoff, though, unless there's extenuating circumstances like mental illness or someone who's maybe -- oh, and we also have a veteran program, which is a two-year program for homeless veterans.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Stefano, and thank you, Amy, for being here this evening. We appreciate the update and all the wonderful things that La Puente does for our community. Our council certainly appreciates that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your involvement.
Next up, we have Wilbur Gibson. Thank you for being here, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you for letting me come in. If any of you have any cry-in pads, you know, those little pads that you put on your shoulders so when my tears come, it doesn't get your shoulder all wet. I have no clue. I don't do things formal like this very often, so if I do something wrong, just tell me, and I'll back up.
If you would tell us your name and your address, please.
Okay, my name is Wilburn Gibson, and I live at 314 Catlin.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We read in the news, in the paper, that you guys are going to try to have some budget planning for maybe some road repair, and with the poor guys from Stockton, we've been beat up for so many years that, you know, we just kind of take it, and we've been taking it for years. Now, the city come in and they asked us a few years ago, will you let us annex you? Boy, if you'll let us annex you, we'll really help you. And we said, well, you know. And so, they annexed us, and they said, well, we won't be paving your street for a couple of years, but probably by five, and by golly, it's been a long time, past five. It's got to the point that the only time we even get a road grader to come to Stockton addition is when old Willie Gibson gets on the phone and calls down there and says, "Okay, you have to have a four-wheel drive to get to any of my rentals." And they go, "Oh, gosh darn, we could get a road grader out there." And they usually do it within a day of when I call them. The only problem, we would kind of like to see that without having to call every six months and say, "Lance sake, we need the four-wheel drive again." And we're getting to a point. Now, I understand that you're not probably going to be able to pave our street. I don't think in my lifetime it'll ever get paved, but gosh, we would like some road base down there and actually make a road out of it that would last. When they grade our road, it's wonderful except for the rocks that they put down years ago, and all of them come to the top, and then we get a Dodge Dart until they get beat back down in the ruts. We could sure use a little bit of help, and we're begging for your mercy. You could possibly update our roads so that, you know, as soon as the city come in, they automatically raise all my rental properties taxes, just like that. But it's getting awful hard in this competitive world to keep rentals and keep them rented when they come down the road and they go, "We don't have a four-wheel drive." It's awful hard. It's getting really tough, and we're begging for your mercy. I won't cry on your shoulders anymore, but I would appreciate any help that you could vote us in, any help you could give us. If nothing else, haul us some road base and strike it off to at least be passable. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Certainly appreciate it. And so, we have a follow-up. Would staff like to follow up on this, or is it something that staff would like to look at, consider, maybe do some research on, and come back with a possible solution? I know we've got capital improvement projects that have been outlined for the latter part of this year and next year. Is there anything that can be done? We'll defer to staff at this point.
Part of what Mr. Gibson's issue is, is the discussion we need to continue to have with council in regards to the -- some of the philosophical questions of how much of percent of the street's budget do we need to put towards preventing streets from getting to a certain level and making them last longer, and then those streets that are currently not in a very good situation and condition, and bring those up to those levels. So, it's a matter of trying to balance that, and that's some continued discussion I think council needs to have in regards to those priorities. But obviously, you know, we'll make sure from a public works perspective that the regularity of the street grader and those items are being addressed and look into the other issues that have been raised.
Thank you, Heather. Counsel Gregel?
Yes, I'm the counselor from that area, and Willie is right, you know. It's been a lot of years that that whole area, the Washington addition area, has had any kind of action, and now we're finally starting to do that. Also, we're looking at some grants and maybe trying to work something up in that area. And like I say, I appreciate your patience, and during that time, I think we should be able to get our grader down there and make sure those streets are at least where you can drive on them.
Appreciate it.
But it's something that we will look at some grants and stuff where, you know, we can probably bring in some monies and stuff to try to start doing something there, so...
Anything you could do would be appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gregel. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Gibson, and we will work on it. Thank you for being here. Next up, counsel, we have ceremonial items and the introduction of a new police officer, chief. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, counsel.
Floor is yours.
Well, I'm here tonight to have the pleasure of introducing a new officer. As you know, since I took over back in April as an interim and May as an appointed, we've had the challenge of filling some positions and getting new officers in here, good new officers. So, tonight, I get to introduce you to Caleb Atencio. He's a Colorado native, born and raised here in Alamosa, so that was a great thing for us as far as retention. We're hoping that he doesn't plan on leaving the valley, and so Caleb's married to Leah Atencio, who's in the audience, and they have three beautiful children, Chris, who's 11, John, who's four, and they have a new addition who, when he wrote this a couple of days ago, was 27 days old, so probably a little over 30 now, right at 30 days old. So, they have a new addition to their family. He spends most of his time with his family, taking road trips and having barbecues with family and friends. Not only does he serve the community as a police officer, he's also a volunteer firefighter with the Alamosa Fire Department, so he serves in both capacities, and he's done that for the last six years. He began his law enforcement career in 2006 with the Alamosa Sheriff's Office, and after about a year and a half working for them, he thought maybe that wasn't the right career for him. So, he moved to Walmart, and he worked there for five years, and during that time, he realized how much he missed law enforcement, and that was really, truly where he wanted to be. So, he returned to the sheriff's office in March of 2013 as a detentions officer, and then he decided he wanted to do more within law enforcement and went to the police academy here at Trinidad State Junior College in Alamosa. So, he remained at Alamosa and went to school at the academy here as well. He was hired on with us on June 2, 2014, and completed his 14-week field training program and now is assigned as a single car officer with our agency. So, Caleb is a great addition to our department, and I wanted to bring him here tonight and introduce him to you, and Caleb, I'll let you say a few words.
How you guys doing? Like Chief said, I was born and raised here, and I'm grateful to the opportunity I've had to be working with Alamosa Police Department, and I'm not planning on going anywhere, and I'm just planning to stick around for a while, so hopefully be working with you all for quite some time. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Caleb. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions? Counsel Johnson?
Mr. Atencio, welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
We're happy to have people like you on our staff. A fire guy for six years, that speaks for itself, so thanks. You're going to be a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. Anyone else? Caleb, we appreciate you making Alamosa your home, finally.
Thank you, sir.
And we also appreciate you being on the firefighting unit. That's really wonderful and like a dual role for you.
All right, it's been an adventure, let me tell you.
Welcome to Alamosa and welcome to the Alamosa Police Department.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, chief. Certainly appreciate it. Next up is Consent Calendar A. The consent calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Counsel may remove a consent calendar item for a separate consideration if they deem so. Tonight, we received September 14 expenditure report, approved the minutes of the regular meeting for October 1, 2014, and received the September 2014 monthly reports. Counsel?
Mayor, if there's no questions, I'll make the motion. We approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or further discussion on Consent Calendar A? Seeing none, start voting, please. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, we'll move on to regular business, business brought forward by city staff. Tonight, we have Public Works, A, 2014 foot annexation eligibility, public hearing, resolution number 142014, a resolution finding property subject to the 2014 foot petition for annexation to be eligible for annexation. Thank you, Pat, for being here.
Good evening, counsel. This is the second time you've seen this. This is, like you said, the eligibility hearing for the foot annexation. She wants to annex with the intent of subdividing the property to create another building site north of the existing house. This, like I said before, is kind of a unique situation in that half of the property is in the city and half is in the county, so she was between a rock and a hard spot, couldn't subdivide the property until it was under one jurisdiction, and that is her intent. We already served the property with city services and nothing -- there's no responsibilities on the part of the city to provide anything that we don't already provide, and this is, like I said, just a formality so that she can continue with the subdivision in the future.
Thank you, Pat. Counsel, do we have any questions of Pat?
Pat, will the additional structure be in that, I guess, the blue area up there?
It'll be in the upper blue part of the square where it sticks out to the west, right at the end of Leroy Street.
And that's large enough?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
I had a question also, Pat. Right now, the foot property, the way it stands, they have to use that entrance through the Burbick property. Is this something that's going to correct that or at least have another entrance into that property?
The existing house will still access where it does now. The new house will access from Leroy Street.
Okay. And will it be a street where maybe even she might be able to access from there or no? Or it'll still be the...
Potentially. They've accessed it from the south historically, and I think that is the legal access to the property, what they've always used. They could potentially change it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gregel. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion on resolution number 142014.
You need a public hearing on the eligibility.
We'll then move on to -- oh, we need a public hearing on this, you say?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that the one?
Yes, please.
No, you have it scheduled. It's on the agenda for tonight.
Oh, is it?
You just need to open it.
Okay. Well, with that, then I will open the public hearing on resolution 142014, a resolution finding property subject to the 2014 foot petition for annexation eligible for annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for?
Dan McCann, 1809 Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. Now, I've known Chris Foot for years. I knew the father, and they did a lot of good things to help out this community, especially the dad and baking and everything. He helped this town grow, and I know the property real well. I've been there a bunch, and as long as it fits in with our guidelines, I'm for it. I've got nothing against that at all. Let's get that thing done as soon as possible.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on resolution 142014? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to counsel for a decision.
I motion we find the foot property eligible for annexation.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I got -- before you vote, don't we go straight to resolution number 14 after the annexation, I mean, after the public hearing?
Resolution 14-2014 is a resolution finding the property eligible. That's all it is.
Is that what you wanted?
It doesn't do the annexation. It's just a resolution with a finding of eligibility. So, to carry out the motion, it would be a motion to approve resolution 14.
Okay. A little confused. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gregel. I've got a motion and a second. Start voting, please. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, we'll move on to resolution 162014, a resolution approving the final plat of the Russell subdivision, city of Alamosa, Alamosa County, Colorado. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, sir. This subdivision is coming out of a need for the creation of a tract for the Viero cell tower that was put back to staff for negotiation. They have worked hard looking for a new property. This is the result of that. They're creating a cell tower tract in the Russell subdivision in the northeast corner that's immediately adjacent to the Colorado Department of Transportation. As you can see, the property will be accessed by an easement along the east boundary, and this was heard by Planning Commission, and they give unanimous approval or recommendation for approval. It won't be served by any city services, and it's actually a pretty simple. This, the creation of this subdivision and subsequent rezoning of the cell tower tract will create a place for the new tower.
Thank you, Pat. Counsel, do we have any questions of Pat? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Okay, Counsel Gregel.
Pat, will there possibly be any expectation for city services at some future date, water or sewer?
Not for this facility. I would anticipate in the future that the property be further developed. At that time, we'll deal with services, but for this facility, I wouldn't expect any.
Okay, and they can't expect any?
No.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Counsel. Let's be Counsel ViHill?
Yes, I just have a quick comment. I'd like to thank Pat and Mr. Gonzalez for coming together and working together to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel ViHill. Counsel Gregel?
Yes, I want to echo that same thing, you know, that, you know, you listened to the city and you saw her concerns, and you were able to go out there and do something different. We really appreciate that, and I'm sure the whole community appreciates that also. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Gregel. I would also like to echo that and not only city staff, the Planning Commission, and of course, Viero Wireless Management for the way they work together to come to a reasonable satisfaction and compromise on this issue, knowing that council has criteria and the beautification of our community. This compromise was something that was well-needed. Anyway, I'd like to thank all the parties involved as well, and so with that, I will entertain a motion on resolution 162014. Do we need a public hearing on this as well? I will entertain a motion on resolution 162014.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 162014, a resolution approving the final plat of the Russell subdivision, city of Alamosa, Alamosa County, Colorado.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on resolution number 162014? Seeing none, start voting, please. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up is a first reading on ordinance number 142014, an ordinance rezoning the cell tower tract of the Russell subdivision lying generally north of County Road 8, south and south of West 11th Street, as portrayed on the attached Exhibit A in the city of Alamosa, Colorado, from residential medium to commercial business. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, sir. This obviously is a continuation of the last item. The cell tower tract will require a rezone to make it eligible for the tower. It's an extension of existing county zone commercial. It will just extend the commercial into the property, into the city limits. It'll maintain the same transition from commercial to residential as exists currently. It seems to be a logical progression of zoning in the area, and Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you, Pat. Counsel, do we have any questions of Pat? Counsel, do we have any questions of Pat?
I got a couple of comments here, uh, on the one resolution we just passed, there's, there's a recommendation that we have a public hearing. Was that meant that this next session, we would have a first reading and then a public hearing, Pat?
No, sir. This is just the first reading of the ordinance. If you pass that, if you, if you pass this at first reading, it'll go to public hearing at your next meeting.
Okay. Cause if you look at the, uh, communication you sent on the last one, and I didn't want to interrupt you, Mayor, as you were going through, says the council conducted a public hearing unless evidence to the contrary is present at the hearing, approve the Ro, Ro, Russell subdivision per planning commission recommendation by passing resolution number sixteen, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay. Eric said a public hearing wasn't necessary, so that, that was my mistake.
I'm just trying to clarify that, cause I'm, you know.
Thank you, Counsel Gregel. Uh, Eric, can we move on?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh, this is a first reading, gentlemen, so, uh...
I had a question just for my own clarification of Pat. Pat, if, if we look at the, uh, city zoning map, which is up there, are we talking about the, this, uh, right down in, I don't know if you see my pointer? That's the area, correct?
Yes. It'll be the, the, right underneath the M in residential, right, right there at the end of your pointer, right at that corner.
Right. And then, and then so this non-city property is county property that is zoned, uh, commercial currently?
Commercial. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, Counsel Johnson?
If there's no further questions, I move that we approve ordinance fourteen, twenty fourteen on first reading instead of for a public hearing on November fifth, twenty fourteen at seven o'clock or soon thereafter.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on ordinance fourteen, twenty fourteen? Seeing none? Start voting, counsel. Okay. Uh, Christie?
Uh, the motion passes five with one abstained. Counselor Stefano?
One abstention? Okay.
And I guess the, the question would be whether that was a correct entry or whether there's a reason for...
Was that a correction? Should we revote or? Okay. Uh, did you vote yes or?
So if you would revote, the system's showing, uh, whatever red is.
Start voting again, please, counsel. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Um, had a little glitch there. Next up, we'll move on to city manager legal, uh, direction on enforcement of landscaping requirement of two eleven, twenty eleven building permit for San Luis and Rio Grande Railroad. Heather?
Previous information that was presented to city council set the timeframe on, um, depending on how aggressive council would want to get on enforcement of the requirements, that it was probably in January. A more conservative review of that information would tie it with the filing of the permit, which was actually October twentieth. So that's why we wanted to bring it to council before the, the January timeframe. With that in mind, um, we've worked with Matt to find out what they've accomplished in regards to this. And the slats have been installed along the property and he's talked to Abs Meyer on Monday and Tuesday and they are scheduled to, at a minimum, get the rock portion of the landscaping next week. Depending on weather, they might also get the trees as well. Um, as a reminder, he did send us a copy of the receipt that shows that he's paid for the landscaping. So it's a matter of just what happens between now and then on the weather. However, we want to make sure that council's fully aware of the, you know, if we want to take any legal action to start that process, um, we would probably want to do that soon within, within October. So it's a matter of council discussing essentially if they feel there's been enough effort and good faith put into it at this point, that they would feel comfortable letting that time lapse or if it's something that you would still want us to pursue some legal action. The separate issue but gets discussed at the same time, um, was the nuisance related to the weeds. Um, the court date was today and the judge has extended the deadline, um, for Mr. Abbey to remove the weeds. They've, they've been cut down, but they're dead and, and still on the property, um, until November. So that is still working its way through that process. Um, the part related to the, um, special, the building permit is related to the landscaping. If there's any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you, Heather. Uh, counsel, we, we heard what staff has to say and I encourage many of you to, or all of you, to go out there and take a look at the work that's been done. Uh, and if you have any comments, uh, about this issue, uh, now's the time for them. Counsel Gregel?
I've had an opportunity to speak to some of those people out there in that area and they're really happy of, of what they've done and how they're moving forward and they only feel bad that it wasn't done earlier, you know? And I could understand, uh, the railroad sometimes, you know, just like any other business, you get caught up and, but they're really, it, it looks nice and once they do the land, the rest of the landscaping, I'm sure it'll blend into that whole area. So they're really appreciative and appreciative of council pursuing this after all. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Gregel. Counsel Gillespie?
Yes, uh, I think it looks much nicer, but my concern is still, uh, the piles of weeds. Uh, I'm not sure an extension, ha- has he been working on that or have those weeds just laid there since they were cut?
They, I, to my, my impression is they've laid there since they were cut. Um, however, again, that's going through the municipal court and it's at the jurisdiction of the municipal judge. So, um, it's something where staff is obviously presenting evidence that the, the weeds are still there and it's the, the judge's discretion to handle the disposition of that case as he sees fit.
And the judge gave an extension for indefinite or November?
No, until November. Let me look at the, November twelfth.
Okay. So assuming at that time it should be cleaned up, is that what we're hearing?
That's the assumption I would make.
Okay. I can, I can live with that, yes.
And that would have nothing to do with the question of enforcing the building permit conditions.
But I would like to see that cleaned up.
Thank you, Counsel Gillespie. Counsel Johnson?
Is staff looking for a majority of yes, no on the pursuing legal? Is that what you're looking for?
If, if, if council desires us to pursue legal action, I think we would want a motion directing staff to do so, if you want us to pursue legal action.
Okay. And I've spoke with Mr. Abbey and driven by the property, I, I'm happy we took the course we took. It looks like it solved the problem and with him paying for the service, I think he's done what he can do to get that done. So I'm happy with the progress.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. Uh, and, and I, I am as well, uh, happy with the progress that's been made. Uh, I did notice some of the slats on the eastern part, the southeastern part of the property have been fractured down around the bottom and I don't know if they're going to replace those, but they have a very dilapidated look and, uh, I, I think those probably could be replaced if possible to make it look a little cleaner. Um, it's, it might be something we can discuss with Mr. Abbey, but, um, a- as far as I'm concerned, I, I, legal action is something that, um, maybe we should reconsider at this point in time, being that, uh, they have good faith in, um, in doing what, what needed to be done. Any other comments, counsel? Counselor Stefano?
Uh, I also have, uh, gone by the property and it do, does look a lot better. And like you were saying, Mayor, uh, the fence is a little dilapidated and you can see right through the slats. That's the only problem that I saw. And the other problem that I saw was all them trailers that are parked against the fence. Uh, they look kind of out of place.
Thank you, Counsel Stefano. Counselor Gillespie?
You say Matt is going to, uh, do some landscaping with the rock. Do you know what he has, has planned?
Um, I, I think in, in regards to rock, it would be the, both little and smaller rocks. And then obviously if they don't do the trees, they would leave room for the trees to be done in the spring.
Is this outside the fence or inside the fence?
My understanding is it's outside the fence. Pat, is that your understanding as well? Yes. I believe, um, next spring, he's also talked about planning, um, stuff along the fence that would grow on top of the slats as well. Um, but that was something he definitely wanted to wait for spring on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gillespie. Well, uh, counsel, unless we have more discussion on this, I think we ought to bring this to a decision. Counsel Gregel?
I think, I think the effort's been made there and I don't think to, to do litigation is, I, is not right, you know? I think even the people there, they just want to be good neighbors and that's all, bottom line, good neighbors and work together. And what he's accomplished and Matt, Matt, you know, I'm sure he had his hands tied too on, on some of this stuff, so, cause I know him pretty well and he, he means well. So I think, you know, I personally wouldn't want to, uh, pursue any kind of litigation on any business, period. And more so, especially when effort has already been made to try to make it better and so I personally wouldn't want to pursue it.
Thank you, Counsel Gregel. Uh, obviously there's the opportunity to forego enforcement of this and so, um, we will obviously need a motion. Or do we don't need a motion?
I don't think you need a motion. You'd need a motion if you were going to direct staff to, uh, file some kind of lawsuit about this, but if you're not, you don't need a motion.
Thank you very much for that. Um, well then, um, we will just move ahead to, uh, public hearing on ordinance number twelve, twenty fourteen, an ordinance establishing the employee, employee pay plan. And this is Heather.
The employee pa, play, pay plan essentially sets out the different positions within the city organization and it sets the range in which those positions are compensated. Um, if at any time we were to want to pay someone outside of those ranges, um, it would require us to come back to council. So it provides the guidance in which these positions are set. The only change from last year is we did add the position, human resources manager, which is a new position that we have. And we had a classification change, um, from support services officer to community services officer. Um, and that's essentially the only changes.
Thank you, Heather. Uh, counsel, uh, we will then go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance number twelve, twenty fourteen. If there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak for or against ordinance twenty twelve, twenty fourteen, please approach the podium. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number twelve, twenty fourteen and bring it to counsel for a decision.
Mayor, if there's no further questions on this, I'll make the motion, we approve ordinance number twelve, two thousand and fourteen.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on ordinance twelve, twenty fourteen? Seeing none? Start voting, counsel. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, next up is a public hearing on ordinance thirteen, twenty fourteen, an ordinance adopting the proposed twenty fifteen budget. Heather?
So this is a very important document, both for council and the public, to really see where the, um, funds are going and the services that are provided. Essentially this year, um, overall revenues, we continue to expect them to increase, um, slightly over the previous budget projections. Um, this year, um, council did give staff direction to spend down the unassigned fund balance slightly, um, to still maintain a responsible fund balance, um, for the needs of the city should an emergency exist or should the economy start to dip again, but also to be responsive to the comments we've been hearing from the residents of needing some of the street improvements and other capital projects. So this budget does include additional funding in order to accomplish that. We will continue to monitor the arsenic, the water regulations, those items that are out there that could potentially still have a large impact on the budget and of course look at ways to become more efficient and, and better utilize the funds that are given to us. With that, I have no other comments.
Thank you, Heather. Uh, Counsel Gregel?
Uh, I had a, a comment, uh, before we go into public hearing is, uh, maybe looking back at, uh, our nonprofits and making, may, maybe making an amendment to the nonprofits where on, uh, maybe putting back that thousand dollars to, uh, La Puente. I had an opportunity to go to several functions of La Puente and I've seen what they've do with what monies are available and they touch a lot of people. And I, I think to take that kind of money away, such a small amount from that group, I think is, is, is wrong and I'd like to see, and I don't know if, if the amendment comes now or after the public hearing, if, if proposed.
Well, let me first clarify what I had in my notes as far as direction, um, and see if you feel that there still needs to be a change. During the work session, there was obviously a very circular discussion that occurred around this funding. Um, initially it was to have, um, staff recommendation, five thousand for the food bank and then a thousand for their new service to prevent homelessness. Um, I think through the discussion, it was a total of five thousand and we would do four for the food bank, maybe a thousand for that, but then the discussion continued and then where it ended was that the full five thousand, which is what we've given in the past, would go to the food bank and we just would not fund the new programs as requested. So as it stands now, they're getting the same amount they received last year, which is the full five thousand. So I'm not sure if that's how you understood it or if you felt there's another thousand that was needed to be given to them.
I, I totally understand what you're saying, but, uh, they, they did ask for that extra thousand and that's why I'm asking to see if, what's the procedure to amend, you know, something like that? Would we have to do some, well, it hasn't been approved, so I don't know what, what kind of motion? Do you need a consensus or what, what is the procedure?
I, I guess at this point in time, I don't know if we should do it possibly before the public hearing. Correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, is council should discuss if they would want to change the amount we give to La Puente, determine if there's votes in, in favor of that and then I guess go into the public hearing for the overall budget?
I, I, I think I'd hold the public hearing first and you can consider any other comments that may come up during the public hearing before you start massaging the budget.
Well, see, and that's why I, I was looking for direction because I don't want to go into a public hearing and something gets, well, I know it, it's not passed in public hearing, but afterwards and then we come back and say you can't really do any kind of an amendment to it. So, thank you, Eric.
Counsel Johnson?
Uh, just a little follow-up on Mr. Gregel's statements. My feeling and my thinking is that we already had this, uh, very in-depth discussion and the majority of council agreed with the direction of the budget. Uh, if we'd like to rehash this whole thing in a public setting, that's fine with me, but I think we spent a good part of the evening discussing this and then do we open up every single, uh, nonprofit that I personally didn't get funded, that I thought should have got? Are we opening, gonna open up that can of worms tonight?
Thank you, Counsel Johnson.
And Mr. Johnson, I, I totally agree with you, but I had an opportunity to speak to one of the counselors that, that wasn't there and his direction was that had he been there, it would went the way, uh, that it, that, uh, it was produced. And I don't know if he had a chance to talk to you, Heather, and that was Ty Coleman?
He did, he did email me. I think some of the wording he used, um, was somewhat confusing to me when, when he talked about why they were reduced, because we didn't reduce them. They were getting funded the same amount. So I may not have provided the best, best answer to his question because of how some of the wording was for the question.
Okay.
Thank you, Heather. Uh, thank you, Counsel Gregel. Counsel Johnson?
Uh, I'm still confused of this because Mr. Coleman's not here tonight, so how would the vote change?
Um, thank you, Counsel Johnson. Uh, why don't we just go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance number thirteen, twenty fourteen? And, um, so with that, I will, I will open the public hearing. Anyone here in favor or against, uh, ordinance thirteen, twenty fourteen, please approach the podium and the microphone. Thank you. Mr. McCann?
Dan McCann, eighteen oh nine Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. Dan McCann, 1209 Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. Politics, unlike Washington, should be the art of compromise. And around here, I've been around here now a number of years, and we've been going through this stuff year after year. Somebody comes along when they're really not supposed to be applying for money, and how do you turn something important down? And I understand where Charlie's coming from. This is where the rubber meets the road. You guys got to make these decisions, and somebody is not going to like it, but if you keep opening up the door, somebody else is going to say, well, my project's more important than yours. You know, one man's freedom fighter is another man's terrorist, and this is, this is what, this is what you get the big bucks for, and I'm being facetious. These guys put in long hours, and if they did it for the money, they certainly do not believe in a minimum wage. Anyway, you do the best you can. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Is there anyone else wanting to speak on ordinance 13, 14? Thank you for being here, Mr. Cooper. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Daryl Cooper, 2315 Thomas Avenue here in Alamosa. I would agree with what Rusty had to say. I'm, I would be concerned that you would open up a can of worms, and that you would have, have nonprofits lined up saying, I want, I want, I want, much, much what Dan said as well. You know, Charlie, I, I respect what, you know, what you're saying, and I respect, I respect Charlie, but I, I would think you need to weigh that carefully, and that if, if the discussion has taken place, and, and the consensus was, you know, 5,000, that maybe, maybe another thousand shouldn't be added on, maybe you can buy a little road base for Willie. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Is there anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on 13, 2014, and bring it back to council for a decision or more discussion. Councilor Johnson?
First, I'd like to thank staff again. We did last meeting the tremendous amount of work that they put in, the department heads. Amanda's not here tonight, but, and then we added the task of spending down some of our fund balance, and that just added to the extra work. Pat did a terrific job with the CIPs in evaluating that. I just want to thank all of staff, department heads especially, for their work diligence. You took our direction, we fed you the information we were getting from the public, and it looks to me like we covered almost every base that we've, that we needed to touch on, and we'll continue to do that. There's plans for next year's budget also, but thanks staff for taking our direction and did even better job than I thought was possible with the amount of money we released to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Gregel?
I had a question for our attorney. When would I, I still want to pursue what I, what I brought up, and do we go through, see if this passes, and then come back with the motion? What are the procedures, please?
Yeah, you can certainly make a motion that the budget as presented be altered in whatever way you want.
Okay.
And I was scrolling through trying to find where in the budget this might show up, and I haven't found it yet, but I don't profess any kind of familiarity with it.
Essentially, in the non-departmental for outside funding, we have a total figure. Within the software itself, we have earmarked the amounts that the direction council gave. So, you would either need to change the total figure to increase by 1,000, or you would need to discuss which group you would want to take 1,000 from if you want to keep that number the same.
Well, one area that I felt that, it's never happened in the time I've been here, I've been here quite a while, is the fact that to give the Chamber of Commerce $13,000, I've never seen it. You know, I've, I've seen it where we've given maybe at the most $2,000, and to give such an increase in that area, when there's already other economic development groups getting monies, and if you total up all the monies of economic development, $1,000 as compared to the monies that are being given to those groups is very, very, very minute. So, that's why I, I thought I'd, I'd bring that up. This thing keeps on rumbling back and forth, so excuse my.
Thank you, Councilor Gregel. Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion or?
I'd like to thank staff also. They've done a tremendous job, as they always do, especially Amanda, who's not here tonight, worked very hard on this. The city's always run a very conservative budget, and we have a very healthy fund balance because of that. Because of that, we're able to spend that money this year and completed several projects that weren't scheduled until 2016 and later. So, in that regard, I think we've spent the most money I've seen while I've been on council to improve our streets, and that's tremendous, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gillespie, and I'd like to chime in on the fact that council has, over the past several years, set a limit of $100,000 for nonprofits, and worked very diligently to make sure that the budget reflects the greatest number of dollars that we can get for our bang out there. And so with that, you know, I think keeping that within limits, I think is council's vision and council's directive. Councilor Stefano?
I would also like to commend all the staff for that budget. They gave me a headache just looking at it. Awesome job, guys, and, man, it's, to me, it's mind-boggling, but just want to thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Stefano. Back to Councilor Gregel.
Okay. I'm still going to pursue this, so, I'll make the motion that we, we go ahead and take 1,000 from the, 13,000 from the Chamber of Commerce, that would keep us within our limit of what we can, what we can give annually, and set that for La Puente, and what was that group that they were asking that 1,000 for, Heather?
It was the homeless prevention.
Homeless prevention?
Yes.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, on the motion to increase homeless to $1,000. Council, any further discussion? If not, start voting, please.
Motion fails, three to three right now.
Thank you, council. So then, we will go on and vote on the ordinance number 13, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 13, 2014, setting the 2015 annual budget.
I have a motion and a second, on ordinance 13, 14. Council, start voting, please. I'm missing one, I believe. Kristi?
The motion passes five to one with Councilor Gregel voting no.
Thank you, council. Next up, we will move on to committee reports. Who has a committee report this evening? Councilor Johnson?
No.
Oh, Councilor Gillespie? I'm sorry.
My mic was off.
Okay. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm going to try to keep this short. I attended a retreat last Thursday with the marketing board. It was about a eight-hour day, which was lots of fun, setting their budget and goals for next year. Hit a couple of the highlights. Fred, Fred Bunch from the Sand Dunes left some information for us. He covered, I learned something, and you may learn something too. The Sand Dunes is proposing an ungulate management plan, which means hoofed animals. They're purchasing some property within the park from the nature conservancy group, and the nature conservancy group is the group that manages the buffalo. So, we have a dilemma on our hands, what is going to happen with the buffalo on the Sand Dunes? So, they're either going to move them off, or, and they're, they're doing public input. I'll leave this in the read file. They're also dealing with, believe it or not, elk management. They're becoming overrun by elk, kind of in their theory, so they're dealing with elk management, and also what they're going to deal with, with the bison on the, on the ranch, or on the great Sand Dunes. So, I'll leave this information. There's some websites that you can give your feedback if you're interested in that. Some pretty good discussion with, with the marketing board on their goals for next year. Couple of their, their, the direction they gave was they want to improve the motorway in some way or another, start working on the development of that. They also, one of their goals is to do a better communication with all of the partners, and the city is one of them, so expect a little better communication back and forth with their board members amongst us, so I, I hope they do that, and I look forward to that happening. There's some building issues, and there's some employee thing, they're going to restructure their employee stuff and go through all that, but I'll, I'll touch base with you guys on that as we get to those points. So, basically, that was it for the eight hours I spent.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor ViHill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I went to the Alamosa school board meeting last Monday. Just a couple of highlights. They hired a Mr. Martinez, I could, I forgot his first name, but he will help their IT program, and they're really going to expand with all three buildings. They're also going to start working on a new school website here in the next couple of weeks, and they hope to have that up and running by January, February. The assistant superintendent gave more information about test scores and how curriculum and how teachers can help to improve test scores district-wide, and they've also included two new clubs in the high school.
Thank you, Councilor ViHill. Councilor Gregel?
I don't know if this is a committee report, but I, I attended the Alante meeting that you asked me to attend, and boy, it was a pretty good turnout for that. What really got me is the fact of all the different groups of people that come into our community to try to help the homeless, and they, they paint houses, they fix up houses and stuff like that. I was talking to a municipal judge from, I think it from Vale, and they bring groups here into our community, and they're coming here and they'll spend 30 days, they'll spend their, their summer here in, in helping improve our community by painting houses and fixing up houses, so it was really, I appreciate you allowing me to do that for you, Mary. It was, it was a really good turnout, and the groups of people that are there that have, that trying to help the homeless, it's incredible, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gregel, and I, I certainly appreciate you being able to attend that. I, I was not able to attend that, and I, I'm glad you, you were there representing the city. Is there anyone else with a committee report? Next up, our staff announcements. Heather?
As Heinz works his way up, I'll remind council, we received some communication from Julie Mordecai on the public hearings they're going to have in order to collect public input. It's their, what they're calling a community process meeting, Thursday, October 23rd at 4:30, or Friday, October 24th at 10:00 a.m. Both of those meetings are at the Alamosa County Commissioner Chambers, and essentially, I think the point is they currently have a master plan, they want to collect public information related to that, so as they move forward with a professional design team, that they're capturing that input. So, a reminder of that coming up, it's open to the public. The bottles, the water bottles you have in front of you, they're actually associated with our second annual wellness fair that we're putting on for employees, and so employees who are participating will be able to get a pedometer and a water bottle, so just trying to make sure we encourage being aware of what our lifestyles are, the impact on the health, and making positive change. And with that, I'll turn the, over to Heinz for a little bit of an update, and then I have one last thing when we're done.
Sure. A couple of updates for the councilors tonight. First off, the Peak Elevator Company out of Colorado Springs arrived at the rec center on Monday. They started putting in the elevator to, that goes from the main gym floor to the overhead track. We expect most of the work to be completed this week. We're going to look at having the emergency phone line installed tomorrow by CenturyLink, and then there's an access pad that we ordered with the elevator, still needs to be delivered. The pad's going to be used in lieu of a key for those using elevators. They'll just punch in a code, and we'll be up, going up and down with that. And once all that's completed, we'll still need to have the elevator inspected and certified by the state prior to use, so who knows how long that will take, so, hopefully not too long. The other update, is showing up on your monitors, is the Lee Fields Dog Park. Kind of get you what's going, has been accomplished, will be accomplished this year and then next year. Task completed this, so far this year, we've removed the, the park staff has removed the horse railing that was around that section of the area of the dog park. The Boy Scouts had a work day at the end of September where they did some tree trimming, and then did some underbrush removal. Park staff did some rough mowing, leveled out the raised track with the help of Public Works. We've purchased new fencing and entrances. We created an entrance on the concession stand side that goes to Lee Fields for one entrance, and then the staff has installed new fencing entrances on the fairground side. Things that will still be completed this year, we ordered the gates, we're still waiting for those to be created and delivered to us. We're going to install some of the waste receptacles and some doggy bag stations. We're going to put some road bases down on the fairground side for parking, and then we'll have a porridge on available for use by citizens during the cold months. For next year, we're looking at installing a potable water line for both people and for dogs. We're going to have the Eagle Scout completed this project next April or May timeframe with the park amenities, that includes things for the dogs, and also benches, and some signage. And then following that installation, we'll have a grand opening once those amenities are installed. To get you an idea what pitch of the area looks like right now, this is looking toward the southeast. In the background, you see the solar field farm right there. That's a maintenance gate for staff equipment to go through if we need to do some work on their, you know, some mowing or tree trimming and stuff like that. This is looking down towards Lee Three, towards that maintenance gate. That's just one of the corners that the staff constructed next, and that's going down, all the way down to the Lee Fields area, the soccer fields in that direction, looking to the northwest. And that's looking back to the southeast along that line. There's the entrance that it's going into, from the fairgrounds into the dog park. We'll put some gates on both of those, so that'll be a containment area for people going in, letting loose their dogs, and then reverse process of, of getting, putting a leash back on the dog, and now to their vehicles or walking home. This looks towards the north side where it goes up to Lee One. And this is how the staff went ahead and did a fence around the transformer that services the Lee Field complex, and also there's that same entrance concept where we in and out for people along that side. They'll be able to use the restrooms during the warmer months when they're open instead of the porridge on. Any questions?
Heinz, I got a quick comment. Those pictures look awesome. Thank you to you and your staff for getting on this, looks really good.
You're welcome. Yeah, they're great fence builders, got to admit that. They, they know how to put a fence up. Anything else?
Thank you, Heinz. Councilor Gregel?
The Eagle Scouts are, what kind of project are they going to do? Are they, are they going to be? Are they going to be putting stuff up, or what's the deal?
Yes, there's... They're going to do, I think, four benches, some signage, much similar to what we looked at at Blanca Vista Park, the wood engraved burn sign. And then also, there's some amenities that dogs will have, some teeter totters, some tunnels to go through that you typically find in a dog park.
Also, what was the total cost on that elevator, the city?
Is... With the wiring stuff, it's right around forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Diego.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question for Hines. So we're looking at a grand opening around April, May?
Shortly, yes. Wherever this Eagle Scout finishes project, then we'll have a grand opening for that.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson.
As soon as the gates are installed, the park will be usable before the grand opening.
That's correct, yes. Yeah, we'll get some of the waste receptacles and that kind of stuff that's needed, you know, for picking up the dog leavings.
Sure, and I want to commend you and your staff on jumping right on this project. I hadn't been out there, and the pictures look like you guys did a terrific job. I'm going to have to drive by.
It's amazing what the Scouts and the park staff, you know, you can sit in the rec center parking lot and see all the way over to Lee Three now. I mean, they used to be all underbrushed, and you couldn't see anything. Now it's wide open.
And the fence costs came in about what we projected.
Uh huh, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Hines.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Hines, you've made a lot of dogs happy and dog owners happy, and I don't mean that in a bad way, you know, but it is awesome. It is awesome to see this project move forward. As Counselor Johnson said, at the speed that you did, you know, we're going to have a lot of happy pet owners in Alamosa just because this happened so quickly. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Your staff did a wonderful job. Appreciate that. Heather?
The last item for discussion was, at our meeting last week, the mayor and I had a discussion regarding the representation on ACID and sending out some information regarding that in that historically, the voting member, we get one voting member as a member of the ACID organization. How it works right now in relationship to the chamber is the ACID organization's essentially the parent organization, so if you pay at that level as a member, you're automatically a chamber member, whereas if you pay at the chamber level, you're a chamber member, you're not necessarily an ACID member per se. So by us being an ACID member, we are a member of the Chamber of Commerce as well. Historically, the voting member has been the city manager. I did check with Randy Wright to see if council members have attended in the past, and he said periodically some would attend, but it wasn't necessarily as a voting member or anything like that. The council at any time would be welcome to attend any of the meetings, but I think the mayor may have wanted to have some discussion in regards to this.
And basically, this was brought about by not only a citizen comment, but I had some questions from specific councilperson, and I had some questions as well, but for the most part, I believe that the city manager should be the voting member at ACID and had an opportunity to visit with Counselor Diego, and we probably intend to visit periodically, just attend a meeting or two, just to show people that we're interested and concerned about economic development in our community.
And along those notes, just so everyone's aware, it's the third Thursday of each month is the normal, regular meeting at noon. Lunch is usually provided, so if you are planning on attending, probably a quick email to Randy would be nice, so he can have an accurate head count for the lunch.
Thank you, Heather. Counselor Diego?
Mayor, along the same comments, I agree that the city manager should be the one representing the city on that, and it's not... It's open to all councilpeople and even open to the public, I believe, isn't it? So...
I'm not sure if it's a public meeting. They are not required to have public meetings.
Right. But if anybody from the public, if they really wanted to attend, they wouldn't be barred from attending, right?
I don't know. Some cities don't... They don't allow the outside public. My experience is we have had regular visitors attend the meeting and participate, so that would be probably a better question for Randy to answer.
And plus, the minutes are sent to us of your regular... Of the meeting, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Diego, and appreciate that, Heather, and we appreciate you being on that board. Thank you very much for that, that and the Chamber of Commerce. Any other staff announcements? If not, we will move on to council comment. Counsel? Counselor Johnson?
Nobody else tonight. I guess I'm first at everything. Two things real quick, I'll keep it brief. Welcome back, Jim. Missed you. I walked in your office the other day, and it was nice to see you. So welcome back. Glad to have you back. You got to jump right back in the saddle, too, because, you know, we missed you. Lots of things to catch up on, I'm sure. Next thing is, thanks to the Valley Courier, I had this information, but I read it in the paper tonight, one of our own youth, and he's not a youth anymore, John Archuleta is being inducted into the Chassa Hall of Fame. I can't believe Dan didn't mention this earlier. John Archuleta went to high school, went to school at Alamosa High School. He is the fifty-seventh, I believe I got this information from you, the fifty-seventh individual inductee into the Chassa Hall of Fame, which was originated in nineteen eighty-nine. He was a seventh Colorado, four-time state champion, and a nineteen ninety-five graduate of Alamosa High School, and his career record was one twenty-five and four, and he was named, his senior year in high school, he was named the male prep athlete of the year in nineteen ninety-five, and he will be going into the Chassa Hall of Fame. The induction ceremony is January twenty-eighth. So great to see a local boy hit that kind of status.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, just wanted to welcome Jim back. Good to have you back. Talked to you the other day, and you're doing well. May have been mentioned, last meeting I wasn't here, but the right-turn lane from Clark to Kraft, what an improvement. Should have had that done years ago, but now that it's done, glad to see it. Great improvement for the city, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Counselor Diego?
I'd just like to welcome Kristi here from Dola. I don't know, I thought maybe she was going to surprise us with some kind of a check or something, but I guess you're just... Oh, okay. Well, welcome. And also to echo everybody's comments on welcoming Jim back. It's good to see him back. He needs to get out in the sun a little bit, maybe get a little tan, but he looks good. Good to see you back, Jim.
Thank you, Counselor Diego. Counselor Stefano?
Good to see you back, Jim. I got an extra brush if you get bored.
Thank you, Counselor Stefano, and I, too, would like to thank Jim back. I did it personally earlier. And Kristi, please come back. I know we visited briefly about maybe a presentation about some of the programs that are available to us or for us, so please come back, talk to Kristi, get on the schedule. That would be wonderful to hear from you. Thank you for that. And I'd also like to thank Jose from the IT. You know, the place didn't really fall apart, Jim. You were gone, but, you know, Jose did a great job for us. He did a great job on your behalf. I know you were in contact with him probably every day, and so we have to thank Jose as well. The only other thing that I wanted to visit with council about, and I did visit with Heather about this before, was I had a couple of people from the tennis court, the tennis court lovers, people that love to play tennis, were thinking they might need some benches out there in the Carroll Tennis Court area. I don't know if you've had any, an opportunity to kind of look at that, Heather, or if that's even possible this year, but maybe that's something we could undertake. Anyway, if there are no further council comments, I will adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned.